I bring this meeting to order at this time. We stand for all the silence. Please join with me, President leaders. The leaders to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I need a motion to adjourn to executive session consistent with Virginia State Code 2.2-3711A, subsections three and five, dealing with property and prospective business. Do I have a motion to that effect?
Summum.
Sum. Read. For Mr. Knight. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, by a like sign. Motion carries. At this time, I need a motion to certify that the only thing we met in executive session for was that which was consistent with State Code 2.2-3711A, subsections three and five, concerning property and prospective business. Mr. Miskavich? Do we have a motion?
Yes.
I'm going to take it. All right, Mr. T.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes, okay. Certified by all. At this time, I need a motion to authorize the mayor and town manager to sign a non-binding letter of intent with "LUCSON."
Summum.
Sum. A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, by a like sign. Motion carries. All right. Thank you, Father.
Yes, sir.
At this time, we move into the public hearings. We do not have any public hearing scheduled. So we have delegations from the public. Do we have any members of the public that wish to speak? There you go. At this time, we move on to the consent calendar. Matters on the consent calendar are considered routine and will be approved by one motion. Any item can be removed from the calendar at the request of a member of council and may be voted off separately. What you have in your packet, the minutes of the town council meeting held on 10th February 2018, the bill sheet, and the additions have been provided for. If you've got a chance to review those, then you wish to make a motion.
Motion carries, please.
Mr. Abel? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, by a like sign. Motion carries.
Cancel packet.
Town manager report.
Thank you. We finally cut some trees at the afternoon. I know I've been talking about that for six months. Finally got the okay last Friday from the Department of Aviation. As of today, about forty out of the seventy-two trees are down. Hopefully, depending on the weather, we should be able to finish this project by the end of the week. Just to restate, the total cost of the trees was $22,400, of which the Virginia Department of Aviation is paying eighty percent, or $17,920, with our portion of payment being $4,480. Our portion was donated. It's currently in reserve funds for maintenance for the airport. There is, was no cost to tax payer. I wanted to report, due to the probable, I'll say, oncoming failure of the town's tobacco, we had to go ahead and make a purchase. We purchased a new one. It hasn't quite been delivered yet, but it is on the way. We were hoping to wait for next year's budget, but we just couldn't afford to do that. We got a substantial trade-in. The tobacco was eighty-five thousand. Our trade-in was thirty thousand. So I solicited the three banks in town for a bid, or a loan for fifty-five thousand with a sixty-month term. All three banks have expressed interest. I hope to have those tonight, but I haven't gotten all three of them. Once I receive those bids, I'll probably depole council for approval. The general bank would go with requiring written approval from council through the process, so there might be some written documentation, either in the minutes or an addendum. Another thing that's been on the burner for years, you'll see the old theater building is down for the most part, and then the process is being removed. Once they got going, the process went fairly smooth. As far as I know, there were no issues. We have currently solicited bids for the replacement of the windows in the town hall. We've got three companies that have visited the site with and only one bid submitted so far. Again, once we receive those bids, we'll evaluate and submit to council for approval. You recall your authorization when you go in and accept the low bid on the H-back system for the town hall. That low bid came in by law, and boy, the total cost of the unit would be $7,650. The work shift begins this week.
Are there any questions for the town manager? Members of council? No questions for the town manager. The town attorney is not here. And we're going to the mayor's report. The House Bill 267, which is amending the town crew charter, passed the House of Delegates and the Senate, and the governor's desk for signature. The town charter has been changed, all intensive purposes. Regarding fire hydrants, Councilman Reed was able to find some information from South Hill of an ordinance they have that identifies certain paintings that have to be on the fire hydrants. Apparently, when we did the painting some years ago, some of those got painted over. But each fire hydrant is supposed to be color-coded and to show what the fireman, what kind of pressure they've got coming out of it. And what I'm asking the town manager and the street department director to do is to get with fire chief and to see, to basically talk to them about this and see what we need to do to make sure that we're compliant with our obligations as members of council. I have requested that the library be shut off during off hours. We've had some issues up here threatening the service disturbances and some potential drug activity. And we have a letter from the library board. They will be addressing that on the fourteenth of March. March fifteenth is Peter Francisco Day. I just wanted everybody to know that. So most of you may know that Peter Francisco had a battle out here, or had a little fight out here. He ruled through. And the ladies from the James Island chapter here in Nodway County, the late Julia Davis Brown, Lucy Sinderfe, Elizabeth Frye, Louisa Queensberry, were able to actually take action and get that as a Virginia holiday back in 1973. And the late Emma Farah, who still lives. And I just thought we ought to take opportunity to recognize those ladies for the work they did so many years ago. Because there's so many good people from Crewe that have done so much over the years. And we always want to keep them alive when we carry on our business. That's all I have. Are there any questions for me? If not, we will go on to committee reports. Mr. Sisk?
Nothing to report.
Nothing. Finance?
No report.
Personnel? Volunteer services?
No report.
Economic development?
I do have a report, Mayor.
Fire away.
Very briefly, everyone has my report in their packet. We had our first Hill Crew meeting in several years. Brought together several members of that group. And all that's listed. What we're basically asking for is funding for our grant writer, or a grant writer, to write for the Virginia Foundation for Healthy Youth, Healthy Coalition's Action Team grant. It's a grant that's offered every two years. It provides up to $30,000 per year for two years with no match requirement, and that makes it very competitive. And successful grant applications include two components. The first component is creating, building, and strengthening the H-CAT Healthy Coalition Action Team. And the component two, implement policy or environmental changes to improve HEAL access for youth. The group met and decided if we are to pursue this grant, that we want to do the following. Component one is establish HEAL Crew as an independent nonprofit for serving as a conduit for all HEAL initiatives in the Indiana region. To hire a consultant to obtain data on youth, healthy, active living access, and determine the current status of health for youth in the area, and establish metrics for a measure of improvement. So that's component one. Component two would be add physical improvements to town park and library park prioritized in the following way. First, a crosswalk from the north side of town to the south side across 460 at Mead Street, that we've been looking at the past four years or so. Two, information kiosks at both parks. And three, additional equipment signage for increasing access and activity at both parks. So what I'm asking for is permission to go with our grant writer or a different grant writer to write that.
Okay. Can you? I guess those are discussed. That's first thing. Any questions for Mr. Miskavich?
There was no match, right?
No match requirement. That's right.
Do you think the grant writers at Nodway could help us?
I can certainly ask. The only issue is the very tight deadline of March 26th.
Well, do you have somebody in there, right?
Well, we...
We had Linda, but I think she's...
Is she not?
Well, she's got the bird, I think, with it.
I don't know.
I can reach out to her.
You reach out to her.
Perfect.
What I would recommend, reach out to her. If she can't, let's go down the list and find out.
Perfect. Any opposition?
Do we need a vote for this? I don't know that we need a vote. But maybe we better. At this time, I'd like the vote of council to authorize, Councilman Miskavich, to reach out to the grant writers to find a grant, to find a grant writer that can draft up a grant request for the grant question at no charge to the town.
Summum.
So, Mr. Miskavich?
It will be charged to the grant writer, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Will that come out of the grant?
I'm sorry?
Can that come out of the grant?
That could be, well, that would be reimbursable by the grant.
Okay.
But if we don't get the grant, then obviously, we don't get reimbursed for it.
Okay, so we probably need an authorization of up to $500?
That's one of the economic development.
Perfect.
Okay, so up to $500 to find the grant writer.
Summum.
Okay.
Sum.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, by a like sign. Motion carries.
Thank you. My next item, land banks. I request the town attorney to contact the Danville City Attorney, determine one, if land banks are a tool that would benefit crew's flight efforts, and to establish, or determine the process for establishing and utilizing land banks. There's an article that I included in this packet that is a brief overview of what land banks are. I can't speak too knowledgeably about them, which is why I'm asking for the town attorney to get all details on that. And I didn't want to just go out and ask Tessie to do it when you tell her by the hour.
Before we ask Tessie, let me see my files. Something I think I might have a contact with the Conservation Fund.
Perfect. Okay. That'll work. Number three, just a quick status update of the Virginia Adversary Investment Fund. Quote is, there's a very good chance of keeping the Senate money, $2.5 million, in the budget. As you may know, the General Assembly had to adjourn. Without a budget, they're going to be having a special session because the Senate and the House have agreed on a budget. But it's a very good chance of keeping that money in the budget. And then number three, the county economic development committee meeting. They'll be meeting on Wednesday. That's an unusual date and time.
I'll be there.
Perfect, thank you. That's all I have for...
All right. Thank you, Mr. Miskavich. That concludes committee reports. Now we move on to continuing business, proposed chicken ordinance. I assume most of you have had an opportunity to review the ordinance and the implications. There is in your package a letter from the animal control officer that speaks to the issue of chickens. He also speaks to the health and welfare issues involved. Mr. Lindberg, he identifies various types of diseases that are also blood-bath chicken. Mr. Gunner had an article also in his paper this week that had an article or information from the clinical disease control that talks about the human health risk of having chickens in close proximity.
Just a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Since you spoke with the animal control officer and with Mr. Gunner's article, did any indicate the level of risk? The chances of contracting either of those two diseases that are mentioned?
No, I don't know that they're in a position to do that unless you can actually measure the distance. And that's the thing. That letter's in the packet, by the way.
Sure. So my question would be, I believe the CDC had 1,120 cases of salmonella that they correlated with backyard chickens out of 323 million Americans. That seems like a pretty low risk. Quick math is about one in 30,000 chance.
I'm just making you aware.
Okay.
All right. What is the pleasure of council?
Has, are there any members of council still on the fence?
I'm pretty much made up, man.
I'm pretty up.
So I mean, we passed the ordinance?
So we have a...
Or get past the, yeah, I guess it's the ordinance.
We have a motion from Mr. Miskavich to allow, basically pass the one, is to allow chickens in the town limits?
The ordinance is not to allow chickens. It's to, well, it's to allow chickens under certain circumstances, including education and...
Fees and all that stuff.
Fees and, yeah, exactly.
Okay.
So not everyone can run out and buy chicken. They have to pass certain requirements.
I got a question about it. Who's going to enforce this?
Good question. Same people that enforce all the other.
Exactly. Everything falls on the police department, the town manager, private police department, forcing all the ordinance we have now. I'm just trying to dump another ordinance on them. If you've got somebody who can enforce it, the way it stands...
Purple, how many cases, how many people have chicken in purple?
Two that I know of.
And everything's good, right?
I don't know. I'm not helping.
Blackstone has to be, we've got to think about this, y'all. To me, if I had two applications, I'm just going to use Blackstone as one. Blackstone and Crewe. I want to move to one of these places. And I look at Crewe's resume, and all I see is no, 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 no. Yes, 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 yes. We've got to think about it. We've got to sell ourselves. And this is a huge thing that people are doing nowadays. We've got to want people to come to Crewe. You know, and of course, there's going to be some that say, well, I don't want to go to Crewe because they got four chickens in the backyard in a pen, no roosters. I mean, really? And then I hear, well, go to the country. We can look at one side of Crewe and the other side of Crewe, all four ways. We are country. I don't see what the big problem is. I really don't. I don't whatsoever. We've had nothing but people coming and wanting chickens. Wanting. We had a whole block, all the customer street came to a meeting and said they're okay with chickens. Now, all these people out here that are no, no, no. There might be a few of them, but where are they now? They must not care too much about it. That's the way I feel.
Have you talked to anybody that said no about chickens?
Yeah. And I asked why. Well, they're noisy, or, you know, roosters and this. I'm like, do you know that we said no roosters? Do you know they got to be locked up 24/7? You can only have four? They got to be in the backyard or certain distance away from the property? You got to go to education and learn how to raise these chickens?
Well, see, that's the bottom line right there. How many are going to go and be educated on to have? And then that's...
When they force that, just like every other dog issue, cat issue, everything.
Still ain't finished him yet.
And boys, point blank. It doesn't take that much.
Unless you take the course.
And there's people running around chickens right now. The way he does his best and tells them, and took TJ and all of them, get rid of them, they get rid of them. I know there's some cases where I'm sure they go back and get them again. But how many cases have we gotten?
Four and a half. If there's no ordinance found now, you say they go back and get them again.
Well, I think we've talked about it for months. Why don't we just vote?
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion.
Let's see what happens.
We have a motion from Mr. Miskavich. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Mr. Sisk. Is any further discussion?
We can lead a roll call vote down there.
All right. Roll call vote. Mr. Miskavich?
Yes.
Mr. Abel?
No.
Mr. Knight?
No.
Ms. Stinson?
No.
Mr. Foss?
Yes.
Mr. Sisk?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
No.
The motion is defeated. Point three. All right.
Y'all people on that notice to it. This town's going down.
I mean, you looked at me last time. I was here, Greg, and said I should have chickens, you know, right to me, saying I have a farm.
Wait, 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 wait. You're in my meeting, sorry. Our meeting, brother. There's nothing to prevent people who have farms or property that used to be farms from requesting a special use permit.
Oh, right. Because it was annexed into town. It wasn't used to be.
Well, the Ashmore Farm was there for 150 years. You basically have a farm there.
Yeah.
So my recommendation would be to ask council for a special use permit.
Appreciate, yeah, yeah.
The kiosk, I wanted to bring this up. Do we have any agreement on that? Is there something you want me to do? The kiosk would be used to work.
Somebody can take over that, I'm good. I can tell you what I think we should do, and we discuss it at chamber meetings. So I can get back to you on it.
All right. If you can give me the data, we can try. I'd like to get that done before you leave. All right.
And Mayor, I'll also mention that that's one of the things that we'd like to pay for, would be HEAL Crew.
Okay, perfect, perfect. So that, we'll follow up on that. Conference room painting, Ms. Stinson.
We talked about this before. And in the meantime, Mr. Al Simpson has very graciously come and looked at our situation here, and he has volunteered his labor to repaint it at no cost. He estimates that the cost of the paint would, he says, I'm going to be honest, he says it'll be $300 or less. I think maybe we should count on it being $500 or less, just in case there are some things that come up.
What, he's going to paint this room, you?
Yes.
Including taking wallpaper down or not?
No, he's going to paint over the wallpaper. And I have, he did that in one of our houses, and it looks beautiful. All of the mural will be left completely alone. And he recommended that he will cut in around those pictures rather than try to take them down because they're secured to the wall with screws, and taking that down might cause more damage than, so. I have enlisted several ladies to help, and we looked at color samples and arrived at one that's called Misty Gray. Doesn't that sound nice? It's very close to the background up there. The bone of contention, we're blending your blues and then your sepia over here. And it looks good, so.
I think those pictures were in the YMCA. Is that correct?
I thought they came from the back. And all the trim would be painted the same color, so it should make it a little more aesthetic.
Mayor, a quick question. Once that's done, assuming it's done before the next meeting, can we have the town staff hang up the TV?
And I forgot to mention, he wants to start tomorrow if it's approved.
With that in mind, we need a motion to authorize $500 for the purchase of paint to be used for the conference room.
Summum.
Mr. Miskavich, Mr. Abel, second.
That's right.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
And I should say, he'll be going to book this.
And if he wants to take him off, willing, having to try to cut around, all you've got to do is take the tree up the top, lift it up, sit it aside, if he wants to do that.
I think he's scared to. We'll see how it goes.
There are only clips holding them.
Yeah, just clips holding them. Right past the roof.
All right. With that in mind, is there any other continuing business on the calendar? With that in mind, we have all the new businesses. Is there any new business?
There are a few new business that are also in that handout that I gave everyone. First, you have a sheet on a town beautification committee that I stole from Billy Holbergh, and that he has sold from him. So if you can review that for the next meeting. Second, per tradition, I'd like to invite delegate Wright or have the mayor invite delegate Wright and send her up.
We'll do that.
Perfect. The third one might be a moot point. Wade, I understand we cannot keep the windows in?
I'm not sure yet.
Okay.
I know there's so-called lead paint, what does that lead paint? That old, I'm not sure about that.
Okay. If we can keep them, I'd like to keep them and possibly look at some sort of a public art project whereby we give the windows to different artists or the schoolchildren and do a windows of crew, paint on them, or however they want to do it. And then we can display them and auction them off for funding for other projects. And I can come up with that, paper outlining that. And then downtown mural. A few of us have spoken. Since we tore down the old theater building, there's now a big vacant wall that would be a perfect spot for a mural. And generally, I'm against murals, but I think that one might actually look good. So if the building owner is agreeable, perhaps we can look at doing something like that.
The building owner?
Mayor, I'm saying.
Do you want to talk to him?
I can ask him.
There may be some grant running for that kind of thing because it's art.
Right.
And it might, coordination through the art department there might help us.
Perfect.
On the town beautification committee, I would, I'm just suggesting, but you may stake holders might be the Crew Garden Club and the Washbuck today.
Absolutely, right. There was one associated with Washbuck that I thought would be perfect for the last point.
What else?
Two other things. I was at the town office today when the ladies from the fire department auxiliary came in. The 5K run this year is on May 5th rather than Crewe Homecoming. So everyone come out for that, sign up for that. But the reason it's not with Crewe Homecoming is because graduation, high school graduation coincides with Crewe Homecoming. Unfortunately, I understand that it's also the same for next year. So I would suggest that we write a letter to Bob Horn, our school board representative, and encourage him in the future to not schedule, not agree on a calendar that schedules graduation with Crewe Homecoming.
Can you draft up a letter?
Sure.
And outside it?
Perfect.
All right. Any other new business? Mr. Tomlin, removing the points of personal privilege. Mr. Miskavich?
Nothing.
Mr. Abel? Knight?
Nothing.
Ms. Stinson?
No.
Mr. Foss?
Nothing.
Mr. Sisk?
Where do I start?
I don't know if it falls under points of personal privilege or maybe I should have mentioned it in new business, but I think it's important that the town crew has some type of standard operating procedure in place when it comes to fire hydrants. Maybe if the council's not agreeable to this one, we work with the chief, draft one up. I don't think it should be a contest between us and them, but at the end of the day, we're responsible for it. And we don't have anything, that I've seen yet in writing, a standard to adhere to.
Right. And that's why the town manager and the street department director can get with it.
Well, they can get together and come up with that standard to, you know, I think there should be something documented in writing that is a standard to adhere to. I agree. Currently, we don't have it.
Mayor, I agree with the councilman, and I think that this is a good ordinance. My only question would be, and something before the town manager, when he speaks of police, you have to figure out is who's doing the inspections and are they agreeable to that? And is there an independent entity, correct?
Right, but take... It seems like that's the issue.
Right, exactly.
Nobody's taking responsibility right now. And at the end of the day, regardless, it's our responsibility.
Well, we do a flush on the hazards. The town employees do that. Whether we're doing a flow, how fast it's coming out, we don't probably, but we know that water is exceeding...
But we know that water is exceeding probably how far it's coming out every time we do a flush, we flush the land.
I just think there needs to be some type of uniform standard across the board.
Well, I had a long conversation with my son about that.
Me too. So, that.
All right, good. All right, with that in mind, we'll move on back to the public comment portion. Any public comments? Very good.
I have a question, but it's not necessarily a public comment. The corrections that I made to the bill sheet?
Yes, ma'am.
For last month?
Yes, ma'am.
Was that part of the motion with the bill sheet?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, just want to make sure. Thank you.
All right, we do not need an executive session at this point. So, with that in mind, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn? All right. We have a motion, and a second, and a further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed by a like sign.